Where'd you get your shirt?
I don't know where I think it was a gift. It's my wife's uniform. I don't know where she found it. I just bought it. I love these shirts.
I think the same shirt at Costco.
Okay.
And it's yellow.
Okay, yeah.
Real nice yellow.
I've got four or five of these in all different colors. I really like them. They're comfortable, they're very airy.
Yeah.
You're a Costco member?
Yep.
Yeah. We do Sam's Club. But we only go like twice a year. We don't go that often.
Really?
Yeah.
I love Costco.
I'm both.
I'm both.
Not that we don't love going. It's just harder when you gotta love all three kids with you. If we only go on Saturdays, man, it's, it, that's when it's a madhouse.
It's a madhouse.
Yeah. If I could go on a Tuesday afternoon, well now, all of a sudden, yeah, I'd love to. I mean, it'd be great, right? But yeah, we get all of our, we buy in bulk on like, uh, you know, all of our toiletries and things of that nature. We, we, we don't actually get a lot of food from there.
They've got a lot of good food at Costco. They've got a lot of good food.
Sam's is similar. They get a lot of food, a lot of food options. I like the free samples. My wife and I always get the, the samples.
That's weird. I never take a shirt.
Never taken one?
Never taken one?
It's kinda weird. People shop differently. I never take a shirt.
You don't take them, why not?
It's not a two-way. Where's the police chief at?
He's been there before.
Yeah, that's fair.
I, I just never, never take them.
Yeah. That's fair. I'm not, uh, I'm probably not a germaphobe to a fault almost, to be honest with you. But, uh, I don't even, if I thought about where anything had been before me, I probably wouldn't do any, you know.
All rise. Call this meeting to order. Before we have the invocation by Jack, very brief words, three individuals that have contributed to the city. It's a great Nick. Welcome, everybody, but Nick is here with some requests with the airport. First person I'd like to recognize that recently passed away is Dean Minor, a member of our community that served for years. I never had the privilege of working with him, but served on the airport board. So I'd like to recognize his service. I also would like to, um, recognize Rick Snodgrass, uh, years, um, on the redevelopment commission, uh, commitment to this city, um, on a variety of fronts. But privilege, I had a handful of years where I was able to work with him. I know, uh, Mike as well and, uh, Jack maybe. Um, we will miss him and so thankful for, you know, I think about neighbors, serving neighbors and, and, and in the attempt of cultivating community. Uh, that was Rick. And another individual, uh, called me about six weeks ago and shared with me that he had some very serious health issues, recently passing away Jim Gast. Jim Gast, uh, member of the planning commission, stakeholder in this community for countless years. Hard as a nail, uh, but he would bend, uh, if you could convince him. And I know several on this board experienced that. And, uh, I'll never forget that last conversation. He just wanted to touch base with me, Jeff. I want you to know, and, uh, here's what I know. He again committed, uh, countless hours for the good of the community. And, uh, I want to thank all three of these gentlemen for that. So thank you. Jack, invocation, thank you, sir.
Let's pray. Father, we come before you tonight grateful for the many blessings you've given us for an economy and natural resources where our friends and families can thrive. We thank you for the opportunity to partner with a new automotive manufacturer and the diversity it adds to our local business. I pray, Lord, we will listen and learn about the needs of this new company and be willing to incentivize its growth for the benefit of our community. I would also like to take a moment of silence to honor our past citizens, colleagues and city servants. Rick Snodgrass, Jim Gast and Dean Miller, or Minor. We pray for comfort for their families during this time of mourning. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Jack. The pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I want to welcome all of our visitors, uh, that are here this evening. Welcome, uh, to tonight's council meeting. There are no reports, oral or written. There's no unfinished business and that will take us to new business. And it looks like Nick, good to see you.
Oh, we approved the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did miss that. Let's go back up to Lynn, thank you. And, uh, so we have the minutes first and maybe for the record, Jerry is absent and Diane Quantz, also legal, is not here tonight.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, thank you and thanks for that catch. So point of order, my apologies. Uh, let's go back to the approval of the minutes for the April 21st meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion to approve is our second.
Second.
There's a second by Jergen. Did I get that right? Jergen, okay.
Correct.
I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You want to oppose, nay? The ayes have it five to zero. Once again, Lynn, for that point of order. No unfinished business again. Uh, new business. Nick, now we're ready for you. You have two items tonight. Uh, the first one is ordinance 2025-0501. What are we looking at here, sir?
Correct. Thank you guys for letting me speak this evening. This is a request for an additional appropriation for my aviation general fund 2206. The $873,000, uh, is comprised of two different amounts. The $500,000 is the money that is committed by the county. 400 of that is, 400,000 of that is, um, already pre-committed to helping with our local share of the power line project. 50,000 of that is, um, splitting a project with the city on creating an airport overlay district, which is, um, zoning for aviation. And then 50,000 is for a self-serve fuel farm that we would also be splitting, um, that cost with. The other 373,000 is other matching funds that we had for projects from last year. The projects did not finish last year. They rolled over into this year. But because we didn't know the exact amounts that were being paid to the different vendors, we could not create an open P O in which we could encumber those monies in last year's budget. So that 373,000 was in my 2024 2206 budget. It was unspent, so we would be, we're just asking that we can spend that to finish those projects up this year in 2025.
Any other comments, Nick?
Not on that one. That's for the 873.
Okay, so as we, we look at this, uh, first thing I want to do is thank you for your hard work with the county and also a big thank you, uh, for the county looking our direction, looking your direction out at the airport, for that half a million dollars. Any questions from the council for Nick? Any questions? Part of this request does require a public hearing and if there are no questions, I will open up any comments from the public. Are there any, again, questions or comments from the council at this time? Okay, at this time, I will allow anyone that wants to speak in favor or against this request made by Nick King, an additional appropriation for $873,000. You may come up and speak at this time. Would anybody like to speak for or against? Opening up his request for public comment. Anybody like to say anything? Okay, I will close the public portion to this and I'll take it back to the council. Nick, thanks for coming back up. Uh, if there are no questions or comments, I will entertain a motion on first read. Uh, this is an ordinance, uh, so this would be the first reading of ordinance 2025-0501.
I would move to approve ordinance 2025-05-01 on first reading.
Thank you, Cindy. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second by Mike. Any further discussion? Nick, any comments?
Not, not at this time.
All right, if not, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it five to zero. Thank you for that, Nick. Now it looks like we're looking at another item. This is a resolution.
Correct. So this is res- resolution 2025-0501. And I would like to go into a little bit more in-depth with just where this money, the money that you guys just approved, as well as this money and how we got to this point. So a few years ago, we, being myself and my engineering team, sat down and had some very good discussion on what projects we really saw moving forward at the airport. We had just been awarded the supplemental grant program money for the power line project. We were one of two general aviation airports in the state to receive that money. To my knowledge, there was less than a dozen, um, in the nation of, for airports our size that received, uh, those funds. So that was instrumental in kickstarting a lot of these projects. And as we looked forward four and five years into what we saw coming down the pipeline, I asked the question, can't, we, we, we already had a company coming out to do some survey and geotechnical work at the airport on, uh, our north-south runway project. And I said, while they were there, can we go ahead and pay the money upfront to get the geotech and the surveying done for our taxi lane E1 rehabilitation, which serves all of our corporate customers as well as our taxiway Bravo, um, at, out at the airport? That's our north-south taxiway. The reasoning behind that, by having the geotech and the surveying done, we were able to pay our engineering firm, and it was about $40,000 to come up with just rough plans, not much detail in the engineering documents, but enough that we could go out after some competitive grants, both at the state and federal level. Uh, we were successful with the state grant and we were awarded $2 million, um, unmatched by the state to pay for the, uh, through NDOT Office of Aviation to pay for our taxi lane E1. So we hedged about $37,000, uh, $38,052.43 on that, um, that we would get that grant. And then once we received that grant, we were able to reimburse ourselves for that, uh, project. The other 4299.58 and 26319.94 was the geotech and survey work that we did on taxiway Bravo. We have, we are at 75, 80% design and we are filling out that grant paperwork right now. We're actually going out to bid on that project next week. If we are successful with that grant, um, our current estimate is around the three to 3.2 million for that entire project, which would collectively, uh, yield 5.5 million, $518,000 with a local share of 94,285. So to kind of recap all of that, we basically fronted around $63,000 three to four years ago to kickstart these engineering and design programs. Because we had those bids in hand, because we had the, um, a lot of that work done, we were able to set ourselves up to be far more competitive than a lot of other airports in the state. And even if we are unsuccessful with the taxiway Bravo project this year, we will have still already, um, brought in about 2.25 million to the airport for that $63,000 investment. So I think at the end of the day, it's been a pretty good return on our money and we're pretty hopeful that we will see this, um, taxiway project get funded this year as well. If we add the taxiway project, the taxi lane project, the power line project, some of the other, um, things that we, some of the other initiatives we have at the airport, it'll come out to just shy of $12 million in about two and a half years that we're investing into our, into our airport infrastructure that is desperately needed. We have some of the oldest asphalt in the state and so bringing some of that back up to today's standards has been very, very welcomed by our, our tenants and our users.
Thanks, Nick.
That's impressive.
Yeah.
That's impressive.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So your specific request is?
So the specific request, since we were successful in the, uh, in receiving the grant for the taxi lane E1 from the state, that's where the $38,000 is going to be reimbursed from. And then we were, we were successful in 2024 in receiving the design grant for taxiway Bravo and that's the other, um, 30,000 and change. We are just asking that we can re-appropriate that money that we fronted on those engineering costs back into our professional services. By doing so, we can do the same thing all over again this year. We've already identified a few other projects that our engineers are work, already working on. We can use this money to have those shelf-ready projects so that win a new grant. And I don't want to say anything yet because it's very, very new, but there's a, a new grant through the FAA that we are aggressively going after. And if we're successful, it could, it could kickstart a lot of really, really good things for our airport. And so re-appropriating this money after being reimbursed for what we had spent will just let me, put us in the same position that we're in today.
In the resolution, those three line items again are totaling $68,671.95.
Correct.
Nick, thank you. Any, uh, further comments or questions for Nick on this request?
I would just say that Nick and his, uh, the engineering firm, um, that he uses out there have done tremendous job as, as we can, as he's told us about tonight, um, aggressively working, you know, with the FAA. Um, I know I've, uh, when I attend the board meetings, they, they talk about, uh, going to conferences and pinning down the FAA people there to, you know, try to squeeze a little more juice out of the lemon. So, um, I just wanted to give a, a public kudos. Really hard work. Um, great job to you and your, your engineering team to be able to get the, these funds. I mean, to get, you know, 10 or 12x return on our money is incredible, so.
And to reiterate what Mayor Gross said earlier, we cannot overstate enough our thanks for the county's support in this because we would not be, we would not be where we are now without the 500,000 that the county has put towards us through their edit funds. And that has just leapfrogged us to be able to be that much more eligible for other state and federal grants that I don't think many people in the community realize the return on investment. And these are not, when people hear tax money and grants coming to the airport, this money that we get from NDOT, this money we get from the FAA is not coming from property taxes. It is not coming from income taxes. It's coming from user fees. So airport fuel is taxed at a, um, it is an excise tax, not a sales tax. That excise tax stays within aviation and those are the funds. And we're competing against every other airport in the state and in the Great Lakes for these dollars. The supplemental grant that we got for the power line project was a nationwide product, grant, um, application. So we were competing against every other airport in the U.S. And so having these projects and that kind of investment in partnership with the county, it's putting us in a place that a lot of other GA airports wish they were at because we do have the support of our local, our local governments, both with city council and the county council and commissioners. So we appreciate all of your guys' help with that.
Thanks, Nick.
So you'd call this a user tax?
Correct.
Basically?
Yeah. Yep, so the feet, the, there is a federal tax and a state tax and then that money goes into pots that it's part of the airport improvement program. And so the AIP funds then directly come back to airports. So when we're talking these large taxed, uh, or these large grant programs that we're applying for, these, it's, it is user fees basically that air, any aircraft that fly in this, in the United States pay these taxes that go into the AIP program. And we have paid millions into that program over the years with our fuel sales at the airport. And it's really nice to see some of that coming back to us right now.
You know, the big news last, last week was, uh, about a new, new company coming in out here on the west side. And it looks like a, a pretty big thing for the community, for, for the county, for the, for Warsaw because of its close proximity. What is, what do you think the impact? Or what do, what do they, what does this company think the impact of the airport's going to have on their business?
I don't have the official number because everything has been very, you know, it's, it's competitive to try and get a company like that to relocate to, or to locate either one to a community. And so, um, while we didn't know who the user was, they have been in and out of our airport over a dozen times since the start of the site selection. And they fly in and fly out and a lot of times it's several business people, um, that come in and they get off the jet and they go somewhere for, you know, we knew they were going to Don, the Donnelley plant, but that was about all we knew. They were on charter jets and everything was very, very secretive. And, you know, that's part of what we do is we are the front door to our community, not just Warsaw, but the county. And so welcoming those people, making sure that their rental cars are prepped and ready. If they have catering, coffee, ice, you name it. We try to make that stay as, as welcoming as possible so that we do put that, that good foot, or we open the door and, you know, try to roll out the red carpet for them. And, um, we're starting, you know, we've started the conversations of once you're established, is there going to be a need for a flight department? Are you going to use charter flights? What does that look like and how can we serve you? How can we, you know, as, make it as easy as possible for your people to get in and out? And another part of that can be cargo as well. You know, there's a lot of, there's going to be a lot of moving pieces. They're bringing in and out all of the items that they're going to need to build these vehicles and then shipping the vehicles out. We're, we're still learning a lot, um, and so we're just trying to offer whatever services we can.
So there's, I would say anticipation that there's a poss, at least a possibility, they'll want to use Warsaw more than, than they would coming from Fort Wayne or Sopin and then trucking things in or?
Possibly. We, we just genuinely don't know.
We don't, we don't know.
I have a feeling on the manufacturing side, bringing things in will most likely be freight, either train or truck. I, that, I, you know.
And that would be big planes.
Correct.
Probably not us.
Yep. Now, once we get the runway extension and everything else, we could potentially service those, those aircraft. That's something that is in our pipeline that we're looking at in the future with that longer runway, is to be able to service those types of operations.
Thanks, Nick. Questions?
Sounds to me like we got rid of the old Buick just in time.
Yep. In fact, uh, Mayor, I think?
Timing is everything.
That would be an Oldsmobile.
Yeah.
Is that what it was?
Yeah.
The old, your father's Oldsmobile.
We did just have a compliment. I know that there was a few members from the state that flew in and, and came down for a meeting with, um, KEDCO and, and Jeremy Skinner in their office. And, and a couple of their people made a comment. They, they were very impressed with the courtesy vehicles and they could tell the care that the city and the airport had in that customer experience. And so that, those are the types of things that, you know, we, we really do try to pay attention to those small details.
You only get one shot at a first impression.
Yep.
Any other comments? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution. It's a resolution 2025-0501.
Still moved.
There's a, there's a motion to approve by Josh, a second by Mike. Any further comments?
Thanks for your hard work.
Questions?
Really.
We good? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, nay? Nick, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Get home to that little one.
Yep.
All right, yeah, go home.
I will not be at the next meeting. We're taking, we're taking them off the meat rack there, so I will not be there.
I guess we'll let you off the hook for that. All right, good.
This time.
Yeah, see you, Nick. Thank you. Next item on the agenda from the plan department, ordinance 2025-0502. Thanks, Justin. What are we looking at here?
Yeah, so that's, that's a tough act to follow. I just have a, a lot of good stuff happening at the airport, though. That's a really exciting.
How many millions? Okay, I'll stop. Yeah, good.
So I have three relatively minor, um, ordinance updates that I wanted to do, um, to bring before you. We have a list of, that we're compiling. Um, I just didn't want to bring 20 of them to you. I want to kind of bring them through so they can be discussed and, and you guys really see what, what little refinements that we're trying to make to reduce ambiguity in the, the zoning ordinance here. Um, there may be some bigger ones that come down the pipeline as we get into this, but this is a relatively minor, uh, three, three changes that I was wanting to get in front of you. Um, so this would be a zoning amendment, um, 2025-0502. Um, we're looking at, um, there was ambiguity in the fence ordinance where it wasn't expressly prohibited that you could have a fence in your front yard, um, but that's the way it was being enforced. And I, we've had a few of these cases go before the BZA. We have two next month, um, that potentially would, where people are requesting to put a fence in their front yard. Um, so I wanted to create, um, less ambiguity in the ordinance and, and really address this head-on by putting a bullet point in the, in the section of ordinance, uh, 13.5.2.2 that describes what would be permitted in the front yard, which is a decorative fence that's no taller than three and a half feet. Um, so that's something that we've been wanting to change. Um, we see a need, we see, we understand that there are, um, residents in the community that really are seeking, um, the ability to put these decorative fences in their front yard. They look attractive. Um, it does prohibit chain link fences in the front yard by adding this bullet point, but I wanted to bring that before council for consideration again on this first reading of this, these proposed changes. The second two changes are a little bit less substantial than that one. Um, one beefs up the definition of lock coverage. Um, in other areas of the zoning ordinance, it covers, it describes lock coverage a little bit more robustly in the, the way, uh, the, the stormwater section of the ordinance. This is the, the definition that was in the zoning ordinance and we just wanted to make that in alignment with, um, what we have in the stormwater section of the ordinance and how that impervious surface lock coverage is, is described. Again, we were enforcing it this way, but again, I don't like ambiguity when it comes to these things, um, in our zoning ordinance. The third item would be, um, the table for sheds. Uh, so this is accessory structures, detached garages, sheds. Um, it just was a little bit confusing the way the table was inserted into the ordinance. I don't know if it was an error, but again, I just wanted to correct that since it did create some confusion for people calling in, just wanting to know what the rules are. Um, so that, that table that you see there, um, is just a refinement of the existing table that you see above it.
Justin, will you bring this back for a second reading? You have all that cleaned up, so it just has what the new stuff is.
Yeah, I can, I can do that if that's helpful. I wanted to show before and after, so.
Right, sure, right.
Any questions for Justin and his department working on making these changes? Proactive, um, neighbor-friendly. Anything for him on this? You could consider it tonight.
So there's really no difference here? It's just the way it's laid out?
Yeah, the table, the table had, um, it's really, this is the way we've been enforcing it, but it just says side yard and, and front. It just, it was a little confusing the way it was laid out. Adjacent to, and then it, it showed the street alley, um, lot. So it just didn't really, we got, got a lot of questions about that table specifically.
The proposed table, making it does, I'd let you look, it's easier to follow.
Yeah.
It is an ordinance, so it will require two readings. You could consider it tonight, um, and not vote. You could also vote on first read. Justin and the council, you could see what the reaction is on it. And then we could entertain it again later this month or in early June. Justin, I appreciate your work on this and, you know, trying to, to clean things up and make it better for, you know, people that are seeking to do things like this. But anything from the council tonight or, uh, it's your pleasure on what you might want to do?
Jergen, aren't you on the plane?
Yes.
Would you like to?
Plan commission, talk about what you're doing here with the, the plan commission's role and then council.
Yeah, we've had quite a, a few meetings canceled with the plan commission. I, I didn't bring this to them, uh, for, for a recommendation to council. We can initiate it in the council, um, that's allowed per the ordinance. Um, if you guys? If you guys want me to take it through Plan Commission... This month's Plan Commission meeting was canceled, just due to lack of business. So if there is a need for a recommendation from Plan Commission, we can...
I think we should go through Plan.
We've had several canceled, just because of something.
So the BZA is where all the fence variances are going through, so we're trying to lighten the load.
But shouldn't it go through the Plan Commission, get their stamp of approval?
It doesn't have to, but if that is something that you'd like to do. And I know there's been discussions with it, but I don't think anything formal has been presented. I mean, the experiences kind of stuff. Jürgen, I heard you say if you think... What was your comment?
We've not heard about it, so we just had, what, four meetings canceled, I think, so.
Yes, yes. But it's been a light year.
Is there a rush on this, or...
No, no particular rush. You guys can take as long as you'd like. I can get a Plan Commission recommendation if that's what you'd prefer. We do have two fence variances that will be heard at the end of this month, likely. So that was just... But that's not a reason to rush it.
It's a good idea to do it. So having been on the BZA myself for a number of years, and these do not look like... These are not real big changes. I would have no problem entertaining it tonight without going through the plan. If the rest of the council decides they would prefer it go through Plan, I'm okay with that. But I really don't think that it would be necessary. They're very minor changes, and it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, these changes are being made to make the BZA's life a little easier. I mean, these are things that would most likely fly right through.
Correct.
And this would just make it easier for our citizens to look at the ordinance and say, yes, I can do it, and get the permit and go. So.
I kind of agree, especially if we've got a couple of situations coming out in BZA.
As a member of the Plan Commission, I can't see anybody having any objections. And it's not really any major changes. It's more of a clarification. So therefore, I really don't see an need, and I feel very comfortable as just going forward today.
Is that... I think that's why you were thinking you would at least have the council entertain it tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions, or are we... Can I appreciate the work here? If there are no more questions or comments, again, you can... It's just been presented, no action, or you can actually move to approve on first reading only. It is an ordinance, so it'd have to have a second reading.
Well, I would move that on first reading only, ordinance 2025-0502, be accepted as stated. And knowing that there's going to be a second hearing or a second reading, and if there really is something, a problem with it, then we can bring it up at the next reading.
Thanks, Jack. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a second by Cindy. Any further discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor passing ordinance number 2025-0502 on first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, say nay. The ayes have it. Again, thanks, Justin, for your work on this. Appreciate it. We have one other item.
Yeah, I don't know about this one.
Looks like... I need the council to say that they've recognized... Jürgen, it's so good to have you on the council here, second year, and open-air garden, and just thanks for all your work and what you do. And this is just part of the process of being an elected official. I'd like, just to protect this, since Scott's not here, we'll just take action that it's... Somebody moved to accept it. I would entertain that motion.
I move we accept this conflict of interest disclosure statement of Jürgen Boss.
Motion to accept. Is there a second?
Second.
And there's a second. Thank you all in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, nay? The ayes have it. Again, thanks, Jürgen, for that. Any other matters? Any public comments? Any questions about this meeting or any of the topics discussed tonight?
I want to thank Chief for getting us this report. Really interesting. A lot of good data in here.
Yeah, it is. I think he emailed you today. I apologize. I don't... But my staff, Whitney, made these copies and wanted to give you a hard copy tonight, so.
Keep driving before the border works out Friday.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, did you want one, or a hard copy?
We just need to get one there.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, Mike. Anything else? Again, welcome, everybody. Glad to see people visiting tonight and keeping an eye on us, and good. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Were adjourned before eight o'clock.
I get to go back to work. Good.
Oh, I'm sorry. We could have held it a little longer.
No, no. Then we had to get to bed before it gets dark.
I know all the stuff that's going on.
Oh, without a contract.
Yeah. Isn't that amazing?